Good morning and welcome to the January 9, 2020. Our first meeting of the year, business meeting, and I'd ask the county administrator, Gary Schmidt, to please take the role.
Yes, Chair. First, our staff support today is Jeff Muns, County Council, Kevin Moss, Clerk to the Board. Role call, Commissioner Humberston.
Here.
Commissioner Fisher.
Here.
Commissioner Schrader.
Here.
Commissioner Savis.
Here.
Chair Bernard.
Here. Please join me in a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Gary, what's first on the agenda today?
First is a presentation to select the Board of County Commissioners Vice Chair for 2020. Really, that's, there's no presentation other than Chair Bernard for you to lead that discussion.
Yeah, I was wondering, what presentation would that be? A speech, maybe?
No speeches.
Well, every year, we select a new Vice Chair, and that occurs first of the year. And this year, we have made a selection, and it usually just follows a pattern. And this year, we have selected somebody. So do any commissioners, so that Chair for 2020 being considered is Commissioner Schrader.
Thank you.
So Paul, you want to say something?
Yeah, we discussed this briefly on Tuesday, and I just wanted to make one thing, and then I'll make the motion. But I do want to say that if we, what I brought up Tuesday, if we can actually make this a consistent start and time, that would be great. And I'm happy to make the motion. So I move that we appoint Commissioner Schrader as Vice Chair for 2020.
Second.
I'll second that.
It's been seconded numerous times. Any further discussion?
Yeah, I just want to say that Chair Bernard, I've really enjoyed being Vice Chair this last year with you, your leadership in keeping us moving forward, being planful, being steady, keeping the eye on the prize every step of the way when we go into those strategy meetings. It gave me a real insight into how government really happens. This isn't all that it is. It's a lot of thinking and a lot of planning. We have amazing staff here at Clackamas County with Gary and with Stephen Madcor, who sits in those strategy meetings to figure out and to help us decide what goes on these agendas. What do we, what policy sessions do we have? What, how are we approaching things and putting that strategy together? Chair Bernard, I just want to say hats off to you. Thank you for this last year. And to Commissioner Schrader, you know, as hard as it is for me to no longer be Vice Chair, and that I did want to stage my imaginary coup to continue, I expect that your leadership with, with Chair Bernard will be, continue the wonderful stability that we've experienced. And I just want you to know, Chair Bernard, I'm not giving you up. I'm going to continue communicating with you, and you're just going to have to put up with me for into perpetuity.
All right, great. So with that, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstaining? Hearing? Do you want to abstain?
Do I have, do I have to abstain?
You don't have to.
I think abstaining would be good, but no, it doesn't. Okay. Well, thank you, thank you all. I've done this numerous times, and it's, it's an honor to be able to serve in this capacity again. And don't worry, it rotates. Everybody gets a turn. And so I, I like that part of this level of government because it gives everybody a chance to be in that level of leadership and policy coordination. It's really, it's a good way. And we all talk to one another, you know? There's not going to be anything that is, that we're not going to share with each and every one of us, so no worries there at all. So, and thank you for your service, Commissioner, too.
My pleasure.
And I'm glad you enjoyed it.
Yes, very much so.
Okay, so thanks.
Sometimes they had to be rushed.
Yeah.
But with that, this motion has been approved. And Martha, congratulations.
Thank you.
Glad to work with you, and thank you.
You too. Okay, with you.
For your services, Vice Chair. And Paul's next, I understand.
Yeah.
So plan for it. You want to start scheduling something now? You go ahead.
I have full faith and confidence that Martha will be, will do just fine in the next 12 months.
Well, thank you, Commissioner Savis. You're a great pal.
All right. With that, we'll move on to Citizen Communications. We have Stephen Graper and Thelma Hagenmiller.
Congratulations, Commissioner Schrader. My name is Stephen Graper, and I am currently serving as the Chair of the Rhododendron CPO. I am here this morning to say thank you. Thank you from the entire Hoodland community, thank you from the Rhododendron CPO, and most of all, thank you from me. On December 7, 2016, this board adopted the Villages at Mount Hood Pedestrian and Bike Way Implementation Plan. As a result of that plan, the Rhododendron CPO formed the Roadie Rising Subcommittee to begin the process of determining what a future community of Rhododendron might look like. Out of that process came a request to this board and subsequent approval by this board to add the Rhododendron Community Comprehensive Plan, aka Roadie Riding, Rising, to the Department of Transportation and Development's Long Range Work Plan for 2018, 2019. Once Roadie Rising got on the DTD Long Range Work Program, the arduous task of finding funding to pay for the development plan began. After numerous meetings and phone calls, it was determined that asking ODOT for a Transportation Growth Management Quick Response Grant would be the most prudent way to fund the project. Due to the hard work and efforts by DTD staff, and specifically Senior Planner Scott Holsher and his excellent grant-writing skills, ODOT and the Department of Land Conservation and Development granted Clackamas County's request to fund the TGM Quick Response Grant. On your consent agenda today is item B1, Approval to Sign Intergovernmental Agreement for the Transportation Growth Management TGM Grant Quick Response Program for U.S. Route 26 Main Street Site Redevelopment Plan. By signing this agreement today, this board is allowing the community, I need some water. This, by signing this agreement today, this board is allowing the community of Rhododendron to begin the formal process of determining what a future Rhododendron might look like. Over the next year, with guidance from the consulting firm Mig, Clackamas County DLCD, thank you, over the next year, with guidance from the consulting firm Mig, Clackamas County DLCD, ODOT, and the community of Rhododendron will begin formulating ways to implement the safety improvements that were originally outlined in the Villages at Mount Hood Pedestrian and Bike Way Implementation Plan. It is for that reason that I am here today, to say thank you. To say thank you from the Hoodland community, the citizens of Rhododendron, and from me personally, for all your help, guidance, and support during this long and challenging process. Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you, and I see it's $68,350, so.
Something like that, yeah.
Thank you. Thelma?
Good morning, Chair Bernard and Commissioners. My name is Thelma Hagenmiller. I am a tax-paying resident of unincorporated Oak Grove, Oregon. My citizen testimony today is about the State Ethics Commission charges that Chair Bernard violated two state laws. I listened to the Tuesday, January 7, 2020, Board Policy Session where there was an item listed under County Administrator Issues titled "Legal Fees." I heard Chair Bernard recuse himself from the discussion on this item. Commissioner Fisher then took over the lead on the discussion, which was about whether to pay the majority of Chair Bernard's ethics violation fee. On Wednesday, January 8, 2020, I read Noel Crombie's article in The Oregonian about Chair Bernard being charged by the State Ethics Commission with violating two state laws. I do not think it right that our Commissioners should vote to use taxpayer dollars to bail out Chair Bernard in this situation. One of you stated that such a frivolous complaint could be made against any of you, and that is true, but I have trouble believing the rest of you would have the gall to ask the taxpayers to pick up the majority of the charges as Chair Bernard has done. Each of you know, before you even apply to run for a paid elected position, that you put yourself at risk for these kinds of actions. I'm sorry, Chair Bernard, you did the crime, you pay the fine, and don't be crying on my shoulder. I'm one of the taxpayers living very frugally on my fixed income, a pittance of what you are, we are paying you. Thank you.
Thank you. And Ken, Stephen, Ken had something, I think.
Having had the opportunity to spend a lot of time at many meetings in Rhododendron over the last three years, I would like to commend Stephen for his service as the Chair of the Rhododendron CPO and for providing really effective leadership for that group out there. We all know there have been issues in, in the past on the mountain. When you come to the county commission or to the state, you come disciplined, focused, and well-organized with your community behind you.
Somewhat emotional.
Understood, understood. But you, from my perspective and dealing with a lot of CPOs during the last three years, your organization and your leadership of that organization is the poster child of how a CPO should function and how a CPO has the ability to influence what we do and what the state does and bring resources to your community. So I really wanted to commend you for your service, the work that you've done, and your very effective leadership. So Stephen, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Les Poole?
Good morning, Les Poole. I live in Gladstone. Good to see Martha, I should say Commissioner Schrader, but I can call her Martha, appointed because she's real steady and she's not vindictive. I haven't checked, haven't seen any ethics complaints on you, but I've also never been attacked by you. So.
Thank you.
You're the kind of person that will encourage folks to show up here and share their concerns, of which there are many. One of them is tolling. Have you noticed the infrastructure being put up on I-205? If you go over the viewpoint, the choke point, as we all call it, at the other side of the Abernathy Bridge, you'll see them putting in tolling infrastructure so they can charge us to use existing lanes and put the money into a magical pot. Last night, I drove up 205, and you see where they've got, excuse me, they've got a speed sign over every lane and advisory speeds. I can assure you that when the advisory speed gets down to a certain point, that's when the toll increases. So it's, it's an onerous plan, it's oppressive, and by God, we need to vote on this. So please go to votontolls.com, download the petition, folks at home, and let's get this on the ballot so the folks can, can get a vote. Right now, it's a two-year test plan they're doing because tolling in the manner they wish to use it is not legal. So folks are going to find out a lot more about this as this year rolls along. And I believe there's unanimous opposition from the Commissioners to tolling in the manner they want to do it, and I hope that remains steadfast. Now, the last thing I'll say is that I'm getting a lot of encouragement to run for the commission, and one of the reasons why is that in record revenue, the county is fiscally, I'll say, upside down, millions of dollars short of what was expected, and that's bothering a lot of people. And there's only been one person that's seriously addressed it as a Commissioner, and that's been Mr. Savis. And when I look at what's going on out there, and when I think and go back about the message I bring you over and over, it's really about being responsible, making good decisions. You're elected as nonpartisan board members. Some of you take that more seriously than others. That's very clear from the audience side of things. And at a time when we're upside down and struggling, if I were on that commission and I was found guilty of something, I would not dream of asking the taxpayers to pay for it. And once again, Commissioner Savis, I'm not here to schmooze Commissioner Savis, but I want you to know that he was opposed to paying this, and of course, the political allies of Chair Bernard were happy to do so, and I'm really not, I'm not swallowing that well, and neither is the public. And mind everyone, Chair Bernard is running for reelection. Mr. Humberston is running for reelection. I think it's time to stop enabling what's been going on here. This is not right, and I'll conclude with one question. Is there going to be, or why wasn't there any action in a public forum? We've got a little consent agenda item here that was supposedly voted on in a policy session. Everything goes on behind closed doors around here, doesn't it? This is another example. I'm over my time, and the reason I'm over my time is I've worked so darn hard so that we can have a forum, and I thank you for listening to me, and I appreciate all of you no longer defending and enabling his poor judgment. We're paying for it. Thank you again.
All right. With that, I will announce that the board will reset, recess as the Board of County Commissioners and convene as the Board of Health, Board of Health for the next item. Gary, what's up?
Yes, we have a presentation entitled Housing: A Public Health Issue. The presenters are Abe Molland and Jill Smith and Rich Swift, all from Health, Housing, and Human Services.
Richard Swift with Health, Housing, and Human Services. And actually, my comments are going to be very brief because the rest of this presentation is going to be with Abe and Jill. So, Public Health and convening as a Public Health Board. We are bringing housing to you, and I just want to set this context. We are in a crisis, and it's a public health crisis regarding housing. And this equates for myself to, if you think back to, and I can actually remember this, you know, lining up in grade school for my polio shot. And, you know, I know that we don't do that anymore, but we had, you know, a disease crisis across the country related to polyodiptheria and other things, and it was public health who stepped into that space and established a platform in this country for dealing with that. It was also the same thing related to clean water. It was public health that actually was on the forefront of sanitation in the country where people had access to clean potable water. So now we are in a situation with housing, and public health is again the perfect venue to bring forward in an objective, database way, the best approaches to deal with this crisis, because it is impacting the public health, where if you can't, if you don't have a roof over your head, you can't be healthy. And so I'll stop there and let Abe and Jill take over. Thank you.
Thanks, Rich. Thank you, Board of Health, for inviting us today. My name is Abe Molland.
I'm Jill Smith.
And before we get started, I just want to acknowledge that there's a lot happening in Clackamas County related to health right now. It's been a housing-heavy week in this room and an even heavier housing focus over the past few months. And I know for me personally, sometimes I try to track it, and my brain ends up looking a little bit like this at the end of the day. So I wanted to just acknowledge that and maybe take a step back and look at the connections between public health and housing more generally and objectively, and understand that how that plays out in the county. So in addition, I'd like to focus on the comprehensive approach that H3S uses to approach housing with a focus on public health services and where we can use continued support moving forward. And before we move forward too much, I want to acknowledge all of the support and feedback that everybody in H3S has provided in creating this presentation. A quick overview of strategic priorities, along the left, we have the divisions within the Health, Housing, and Human Services that work together with other departments in the county, including Transportation and Development, Business and Community Services, to provide high-quality, location-efficient, affordable housing in the county for our residents that's near living wage jobs and viable transportation options, which are all a precursor to safe, healthy communities outlined in the strategic plan. I want to point out that the Public Health Division is guided by the Blueprint for a Healthy Clackamas County, which outlines a few strategies related to using housing as a platform for health, including promoting interdisciplinary partnership across the county and using a health equity lens on using housing as a platform for health. So this is a version of the housing continuing model. There are lots of different versions of this, and I believe a version of this has crossed this space before. But to cover it very briefly, on the far left, we have people experiencing houselessness, still living in tents, cars on the street, and on the far right, we have market rate rental housing and homeownerships. A couple, and in between, we have a multitude of housing status options. A couple assumptions about this, this is not a comprehensive diagram, it doesn't cover all of the options for housing, and it also is not a linear model. People don't move from one stage to another in a nice linear fashion. It's messy and it's complex. To contextualize this a little bit within the county, I've put a few of the services programs and places that fall within some of these categories to show how that's being played out in the county. And I paint this picture to illustrate public health's interest, that each of these housing statuses have unique and complex health connections. Somebody that's experiencing houselessness has different health priorities and concerns than somebody that's living in a market rate rental housing status. So to talk broadly about how housing influences health, I like to think, I like to think about four different categories and four different buckets as I'm approaching housing policy conversations: stability, quality, affordability, and neighborhood. So stability refers to somebody's level of control that they have over when and where they choose to move. So associated health outcomes that we see there when people don't have high levels of control over that decision is increased anxiety, depression, poor mental health outcomes, greater risk of experiencing emotional trauma or physical trauma, and we see disruptions in people's education, employment status, et cetera. When we're talking about affordability and health, we know that when people are paying lower rents, they have more of their income to spend on health-promoting items, so healthy food, transportation, healthcare, access to higher education, those types of things. And when they don't, there's higher levels of stress associated with that as well. And those two receive a lot of airtime in this space. The other two categories, quality and neighborhood quality, we're talking about the actual physical structure of the places where people live. So are there modifications to help people age in place and decrease fall risk? Are there building materials that promote healthy indoor air quality? And those types of things, when we're looking at the neighborhood factors, we're looking at things that are around the home. So is there access to parks for physical activity opportunities? Is there public transportation, access to living wage jobs? These are, these are fairly intuitive categories, but I feel that looking at housing policy through these four buckets is a helpful tool to carry forward when you're trying to understand health impacts. On the flip side, health has also been shown to influence a person's housing status, and we've seen through the Clackamas County Point in Time Count, as well as national research, that health conditions can contribute to houselessness, that when people experience mental health issues, substance use disorders, chronic untreated disease, or physical and emotional trauma that can destabilize them from their current status. And more so than these health conditions, from a public health perspective, we want to be focusing on access to resources, services, and treatment for these health conditions, because from a public health perspective, when people don't have access to services for these conditions, we know that it will potentially destabilize them and that we need to address that upstream determinant, because housing is a fundamental right, which leads us to the Housing First Model, which shares the same founding principle. And we know that if we don't address that primary principle, then there is an increased cost to public services as well as the public health realm. So these are some national statistics that may not be appropriate for our, our region, but still apply in some degrees for ballpark figures of the average annual cost of a person experiencing homelessness to public systems has been, it's going to be around $40,000. And the average annual cost of somebody experiencing houselessness, who visits the emergency room on average five times a year, is around $18,500. Again, these are, these are national figures and may vary depending on the region. But in comparison to providing rent assistance, which is around $900 or $800 in the region, there, there's no comparison that it's cheaper to focus on prevention and keep people in housing than pay these extra costs related to poor health outcomes. So to revisit the housing continuum and to overlay some public health services that we offer here in the county, we have health impact assessment services, health outcome tracking and monitoring, including surveillance of health outcome conditions related to housing, infectious disease control across the spectrum of housing options, so focusing on sanitation and access to clean drinking water and clean food, and supporting recovery housing as a physical determinant of health for people that are experiencing substance use disorders and need a place to recover. I'm doing a lot of talking, Jill, do you have anything to?
I'm making notes.
Okay. To dig in a little bit deeper into one of these category areas, health impact assessment in housing. So health impact assessments, to recap, are a six-step established process that focuses on providing decision-makers and policymakers with information around the potential health impacts to a program, policy, or project, and they provide a lot of benefits. One, they provide a pause and allow decision-makers to focus on what are the equity impacts and potential unintended consequences to vulnerable populations that, that are influenced by a decision. They leverage partnership opportunities with other, other entities in the region as they are interdisciplinary efforts and create a menu of recommendations at the end of the process to pursue additional funding opportunities and strategies to promote health. They also build community and decision-maker buy-in and support for proposed actions and help establish health outcome baselines for further monitoring to evaluate the difference that housing programs are making in the community. So we've completed two of these health impact assessments in the region so far, one on the Veterans Village and one on Hillside Master Plan, and that's the four-page overview that's included in the packet for today. And we're also underway on one for the Gladstone single-room occupancy site along Webster Road in Gladstone.
Can I say something?
Yes, of course, please.
I just want to say thank you for convening as the Board of Health and looking at this as a priority, I mean, with this perspective. I think there is a more important perspective. And as the Housing Director within Health, Housing, and Human Services and under Rich's direction, we are really committed to becoming more disciplined and using this data and this information, you know, these guides, these health impact assessments, as we make policy, as we develop housing. It really does take discipline to slow down and look at best practices and analyze information that's out there, and their partnership has become invaluable to us. The first time that we really... The first time that we really stepped into this world was with the Veterans Village, and we made some big changes as a result of the understanding that we obtained. If you read this on The Manor, there's some pretty impactful information that's troubling to me related to the health of the people that live there. And we need to take these things into account. One thing that you'll be seeing very soon, as the Housing Authority does their annual plan, which is required by HUD, is there'll be some policy changes coming before you that directly align with some of the things that Abe has talked about regarding choice, people having choice of where they want to live. We're going to be making some big proposed changes so that people have the ability to move to Lake Oswego or Westland. You know, there are people in poverty that live there that would like to be able to stay there if they were lucky enough to have affordable housing developed there or to get a voucher and they wanted to live there. Right now, they can't because we have not set different payment standards for different areas allowing access. So that's one example of how policies really impact people's lives. So I just wanted to let you know about this commitment that we're making to have public health be our partner in all of our decisions.
So to recap, a few points on the summary slide, and then we can take questions. To recap the connection between housing and health, four overarching buckets: affordability, stability, quality, and neighborhood. And that housing policy is health policy in a way, and that it's important to consider both in these housing discussions. And a couple key questions to carry forward is how does housing policy influence health through these four pathways? And how does it reduce disparities? And ask, what are the unintended consequences of the decisions that we're making? How do we address them before we have to face them?
All right. Thank you. So we have everyone's light is on. We're going to start with Martha, Ken, Paul, and then Sonya.
Yeah, thank you. I actually wanted to ask if we could have copies of this, of your slideshow. I'd like to have them. You can just send it to us electronically.
Definitely.
Can you pull up the Continuum of Housing slide again?
Let's see if I can.
Yeah, I think, I think that's the one. So I guess my question for some of our policies, we right now are, of all this continuum, what are we really focusing on in terms of what population we're working with?
If you're talking about H3S.
Yes.
It would really be from houseless. You know, we'll dip our toe into homeownership, lower-income homeownership, but we don't really work in the market rate world. Everything else, I think, we're looking at.
That's, I just wanted to, that's what my sense is too, because when you get to the far side of this upper continuum, you're talking about folks that probably are not dealing with the same level of barriers, you know, probably already living in a healthy community, walking, getting their health needs met. So most of this is, again, going to be working with folks that need that extra, that extra help to leave, you know, a stable, sustainable life. Okay.
Unfortunately, a lot of our housing from below market and all the way to houseless, seniors with disabilities, but people that are aging, are moving into the majority of all of our assisted housing. And that's our largest growing population. And those are folks that don't have the ability to, you know, get some training, get a job, and move on.
Yeah.
So the properties are filling up with these people, and there's not vacancy for the, you know, public housing used to be families would get in, get stable, and move on. And that's just not what it is anymore. So when Abe said people don't necessarily move along the continuum, that's one example of why.
And that's, I wanted to make sure this kind of conversation is public. And so my other question is, I believe, isn't Kaiser working on a particular program specifically for that population of, what is it, 50 and older?
Yes, we're doing programming right now, and I'll come to you in February with a grant agreement that I hope you'll approve. It's to allow Clackamas County to serve 80 seniors, 50 and older. I mean, I'm a senior too, I guess, having a hard time with that concept. But they've got to be homeless with a disabling condition. So these are high-needs people that, you know, they're hoping some of them, they're will be tied, there's going to be an agreement that they have to enter into, that they allow their health conditions to be monitored, to see if there's a difference between that initial year when they come out of homelessness to the second year that they're housed and stable. And we're going to look at the medical costs and the impact of the change.
That too. Thank you. That's going to be a great project, and I'm so glad. I can't speak to whether we'll approve it or not, but I strongly suspect we will. So thank you for all your hard work. And I have a high interest in public health, so I'm so glad that you're integrating the two pieces. And we're really recognizing that housing is a key component of that. So thank you all for your hard work.
Ken.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just wanted to share with the general public, since they may be watching or listening, what we are, some of the things that we are doing, which isn't to suggest by any means that we're doing enough. There's a lot more that needs to be done to help people. There's a lot of needs out there. But just to put it somewhat in perspective, 19 people, veterans, have moved from homelessness into supported housing. And we've increased the number of pods at the veterans' shelter to 19, so we get 19 more people off the streets, at least into shelter. 24 units of housing called the Clayton Moore Complex has opened up, and that will house low-income veterans. We have about 214 units soon to come online over on Audi that will be for low-income folks. We're expanding the property at 32nd Street in Milwaukee that will include 400 more, so it takes it up to about six, 500 or 600 people that will have housing, at least 400 that didn't have it before. And ultimately, the Holcomb Road area in Oregon City will be redeveloped and include more people. So a lot is being worked on, a lot is being done. I'm not here to suggest that that's enough, but I wanted to put it in perspective so that people don't think nothing is being done. We're past the stage of just planning, and we are doing things. And that's just an example of some of the things that are being done. And I want to commend staff for the work that they're doing to make these things happen, so.
One more thing I want to call out is next week, there will be an RFP published for developers to apply for Metro bond funding. So hopefully, very soon, you'll see a bunch more developments actually happening.
Excellent. Thank you very much.
Yeah, I just want to just express my gratitude for and the hard work that all the staff have done in this area. And I think in my 10 years here, almost 10 years, watching the conditions out there on the street change, and unfortunately, not in the most positive way, not by virtue of what we're doing or not doing, but just the market conditions out there and the cost of housing. And I reckon back to, you know, the first time I did the Meals on Wheels, and I remember just going, a couple tearing up situations when I realized that some of the doors that I had previous knocked on and for previous reasons, those people were struggling. And between that and also between doing the homeless counts, I think when you see the situations and you see people that are in poor health or have habits maybe that got them into poor health, whether it's smoking or whether it's, you know, bad, you know, choices on nutrition, a lot of contributing factors, and some of which even, even the healthiest of people sometimes have other illnesses that are just part of their DNA. But it's something that's hard to relate to for people in the public to really understand. And I know that, again, as conditions have gotten worse, we've seen more and more of H3S staff on a regular basis, more than ever. But I did want to just, just say, you know, just offer my appreciation for the difficult work sometimes and being face-to-face with these people, trying to help people in these situations. It has been a very learned experience for me in both those settings. Again, doing the Meals on Wheels and the homeless count and talking and dealing with those populations directly, that's hard work. It's difficult work. And I just want to just say my appreciation for what we're doing. And it's my hope that we can get more coordination with the state, with other counties, with other agencies, in all these different realms. And we need to come up with a strategy because if the predictions are correct, we've got a big challenge in front of us. And I, we've made great gains. I think Ken identified some of the numbers, and we've got more, you know, in line that we're working on, that'll even grow beyond that, which is great. But when it comes to, you know, whether it's sobering centers or it's drug treatment or all the needs that we have out there, we need some significant assistance with that. And I think that we're going to have to be more organized. I think there's power in numbers when it comes to organizing with, whether it's the state or other counties or other cities. But it's a tough thing to grapple, and there's just not enough resources to do everything we need to do. But great presentation, great work you're all doing at a very critical time. And we had cold weather around the corner, so I'm sure next week we'll be talking about warming shelters and opening those up as well, right? So thank you for everything you do.
I could jump in on that, actually, and that sort of tails with Commissioner Humberton's statement. You'll actually receive an update today. We'll send that to Administrator Smith, and then he can forward on to the board regarding the warming shelters, capacity of each when they're opening, as we're prepared to deal with the weather of next week. So.
Do you have a total number of beds?
I don't have that off the top of the head, off the top of my head, but we, it's at least 70, I believe, at this point that we have. And our usage hasn't been all that high as of recently. So I think we have enough at this point. We'll see. But you will be receiving that update here later today via email.
Commissioner Fisher.
Yeah, it's nice to spend some time focusing on this intersection between health and housing. I was really pleased when I was at the Coordinated Care Organization's Health Share, had a strategic planning meeting months ago, and there was a real focus on the importance of housing as it relates to health. And I was really pleased to see that because it seems like as policymakers were constantly pounding this drum of why this is so important, and here it was already on the sheets that were all on the walls for the community to have influence on. So I was very pleased to be part of that process and connect with that. I've also been pleased that we've taken the lead on studying this issue pretty heavily with, through the Corporation of Supportive Housing, working Tri-County, with really looking at what the needs are in our community. And I'm also pleased that we, as a county, are looking at our frequent user systems, and I don't know what the E stands for, Rich. You probably know it's the FUSE analysis. Frequent user.
Engagement.
Yeah.
Engagement.
Engagement. And I just wanted to ask, I don't know, a couple of questions I have, I don't know what the status of that study is, if we've completed it, and if we could have some comments on that. And I would also like to know, we've had discussions regarding how costly houselessness is to our system through our jails, through our emergency rooms. And I appreciate Abe bringing that up and showing some national statistics on the costs of houselessness. But I'm also interested in knowing, along with the FUSE analysis, that there's been discussions nationally, and there are some communities where health insurance dollars, whether that's Medicaid or health systems, will provide rent assistance for people that need housing because it is a health condition. Their health condition is related to houselessness, and they will actually use healthcare dollars to pay for housing. And we've had talks about how could that work in our Tri-County region and in Oregon? And I'm just curious if you could comment on where those discussions are as well.
The FUSE analysis was completed. I think it's, I don't want to misquote any of the data, but it was, it was pretty enlightening. There was a tremendous amount of focus on people in the correction system. I think it's worthy of a policy session. So we'll get that scheduled.
We actually do have it scheduled for January 21st.
Oh, well, it's so timely.
Good. So, but he kind of led that work. So I'm sure he'll be the one presenting on it. What was the other question?
Oh, just regarding the concept of healthcare dollars paying for rent assistance. Like, you go to the emergency room, there's somebody that has an infection that keeps getting worse because they don't have housing. And the idea is that right from that emergency room, it's almost like a doctor would be able to write a prescription for rent assistance to get somebody into housing.
That is the whole concept behind the pilot, the Metro 300, the Health Share and Kaiser are paying, giving us the rent for these 80 folks. They will be studying the impact on that in hope that it's a pilot that will grow and continue. It's all about getting the healthcare system to invest in rent assistance. That's exactly what it's for. I think it will be telling. Let's hope it results in a lot more investment.
Yeah, I think the concept is one that is important. So thank you, and I really appreciate the focus on the issue.
Well, I'd say we've come a long ways also. Back, you know, we recently did a housing needs assessment countywide. I was talking to one of the city councilors in Twolleton today, but they just completed theirs, and then they discovered there's a huge need for affordable housing. But I'd say years ago, I've always wondered why hospitals didn't get more involved in housing, the housing issue, and because the cost to the emergency room is tremendous. And they used to just write it off, I guess. Well, they still do, but, but now they are stepping up. You hear Kaiser doing it, you hear Providence doing it, and that's a big sea change. So I, we've come a long way, and people actually are talking about it way more than we hear here. But everybody's talking about it. So we've come a long way. So thank you very much for your presentation. Appreciate it.
Thank you. You're welcome.
Anything additional? Thank you very much. Don't forget that coffee with Martha. Next, announce that the Board will adjourn as a Board of Health and reconvene as the Board of County Commissioners for the remainder of the meeting, and we have some public hearings.
Yes, Commissioners, your first public hearing is a second reading and adoption of Ordinance Number 01-2020, amending County Code, Chapter 2.07, Compliance Hearings Officer. Jeff Muns, Assistant County Counsel, will present.
Thank you. Good morning, Commissioners. Jeffrey Muns, Assistant County Counsel, talking to you about the proposed changes to Chapter 207 regarding our compliance hearings officer. Compliance hearings officer hears matters related to code enforcement. Our code enforcement process, like much of our service, you know, the real goal is good communication with the public to address complaints that we receive regarding violations of the County Code. And the changes we're proposing to Chapter 207 are really to implement some changes for better communication and notice of matters that are proceeding with our compliance hearings officer. Presently, the, well, the process wouldn't change, but the process for code enforcement is we receive a complaint, and then our code enforcement specialists would be contacting the owner of a piece of property or the tenants on a piece of property to talk about the complaint they received and start a dialogue to address this and try to get the violations cleaned up and addressed. And if that's unsuccessful, then a citation would be issued. And if the citation is ignored, another one goes out to this person. And if that's, again, ignored, the matter would go to our compliance hearings officer for a hearing to get a, an order from the compliance hearings officer, try to get this violation abated and addressed and to really address the complaints and concerns of neighbors, those folks who have brought this to our attention. Currently, the way our code works is that the citation is sent to the individuals by certified mail, but the notice of hearing goes by registered mail. So they're not the same, leads to confusion, increased cost, and as we've found, about 80% of these get returned. Because of that, the people aren't getting the official notice, and our staff has taken over the last number of years to sending these notices by first-class mail to make sure that they, they get notice. And those first-class mail notices are not getting returned. So these folks are getting notice, but they're not getting the official notice because they're not picking it up. And we're wasting money essentially to do that. So the changes we've proposed to Chapter 207 are to take out these references to certified and registered mail, replace them with first-class mail, and retain our ability to serve someone personally with these notices and citations. And then adding in an ability that if they're not there, we can also post it at their residence, using essentially the procedure that is used in like an eviction case, where you would post it on the property so someone would have access to it. And that's helpful for us in circumstances where there's not a mail receptacle available or someone not there to receive it. We can go out to the property once, post this notice, and then they would have notice of the citation or the upcoming hearing so they can appear and defend themselves and continue to work with the county to address these violations. So those are the changes that we're proposing to essentially streamline the process, ensure better communication and notice of these matters that are going forward, and address these violations for the community as well as the people who are affected by them owning the property. So do you have any questions that I can answer?
I have a comment, and I see Ken does too, but he and I attended a CPO meeting up off of Wildcat Mountain Road, and there is a community. CPO meeting up, uh, off of Wildcat Mountain Road, and, um, there is a communication breakdown at your end and ours. And, um, I think that we've got to figure out a way to make this. I, I told them, how, what, what do you think we ought to do? And I said, what we need is a champion from the commission. If you're not getting an action, any action, find a champion on the commission. I know Paul has done it in the past. We all have been champions on certain projects. But this particular site was amazingly terrible. We actually have , uh, health, safety, and we've got a, I think it was called Bear Creek being polluted by this, this, uh, outfit that is allowing homeless people to, uh, live on their property and just, uh, with, uh, lack of septic systems and trash collection and, uh, and, uh, so we need to figure out a way to do this a lot better. And also, we need to somehow step up how fast we do it. You know, these people have been talking about this project and another one for years, and it was just not getting to it. So, um, I'm sure Ken wants to add to that comment, uh, but, um, I understand that we are actually taking action with, with these, uh, the folks up on the mountain. That is going, you mentioned you are bringing it to the Neighborhood, uh, Livability Group, and they're going to take some, uh, some legal action to resolve this problem. Uh, and I told them, uh, um, that I would respond in forty-five days, and we're working to, uh, to get a response that I'm hoping they'll get next week. That'll show them that we are taking action. Ken, and then Paul, then Sonya.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, your, your comments stand. I don't, I don't need to add to that. Um, I did have a question regarding this particular policy. Um, in posting on, on the property, have you considered taking a photograph after you posted to make sure that you can demonstrate that you clearly did?
We do. And in fact, it's a, a training that I'd given to a lot of our staff, uh, a couple of times now since I've been with the county, where we talk about photographic evidence of the work that we did, um, where we were on the property and so on, to avoid issues like trespass, and as well as to show that we posted, posted the property. So we have photos in our files of that type of work to show that it's been completed.
Good, because I'm just kind of thinking ahead and, you know, if, how things can end up unfortunately in court, and making sure you, you've covered that base, I think, is important. So, thank you. That's all I had. Paul?
Yeah, well, I appreciate, um, you know, Jim, you did, uh, recognize that we've been making steps, and I want to give credit where credit is due. Um, and so the Neighborhood Liberty Project was mentioned, and that was something that came from, uh, three Clackamas County Sheriff deputies, the concept where we got that nuisance ordinance in place. We also had the good work of the DA's office, um, and we got this program started. And I think this is also an example of the good work on our, in legal counsel, is trying to identify some of the loopholes and things that cause delays and problems in, in our doing our work and our pursuit. So, um, I want to just give credit to our, our legal staff, our, our code enforcement folks, um, um, DTD, uh, the Sheriff's Office, everyone, the DA's office, everyone who's been involved. And we are making these changes. And so kudos to everyone, um, to help put these things to bed. And the NLP, the, the identification, the good work that the Sheriff's Office deputies did was identify this nuisance thing where, um, once a, a particular property has a number of nuisances, that it rises to the level of deeper engagement of all the, all the different agencies to, um, to deal with it. And hopefully, these longstanding years-on things that, as you identified, Jim, um, don't, don't continue, that we're able to get in front of them. But they're all different. Um, they're all unique, and, uh, we're learning. So, um, I'm pleased, uh, that we're moving forward with what we're doing today here.
Sonya?
Yeah, so I just want to, it seems like this is a effort to clean up, um, confusion within our code and to make it clear. And it looks as if, that based on the changes, that we can serve notice of a hearing by either US mail, personal service, or by, or by attaching the notice to the, um, premises. So my question is, how do we know that the individual that should get notice of the hearing actually gets notice if we choose not to personally serve?
Well, the person we're trying to contact, you know, would be the, the respondent in this process. Usually it's the property owner, sometimes property owner and the occupant of, of the property. And so we have that contact information, whether we, we've been, usually been in a, a dialogue with them to some level. So we know that if we mail it to them at that address, we've had, you know, some past correspondence with them at this point, before we even send a citation, we will send a, a ledge letter prior to that point. It comes from code enforcement saying, "We've received an allegation of a complaint on your property that we're investigating," and we send it to them. We usually get a call back from them pretty quickly at that moment, hopefully, so if they want to address it. Uh, sometimes they dispute it, sometimes they want to know more about this, uh, potential violation so that they can cure it. Um, so at that point, we usually have a, kind of an established, um, method of communicating with them, whether it be a good address or something so that we can do so. Sometimes that process breaks down there. We determine that it's not a good address, and our folks, our staff go out there and actually engage with them personally. And if that's the best way to get ahold of them, that's how we try to, we'll be trying to serve them with these notices in the future to make sure they get it. Because we don't want the process to bog down in, well, we sent it out in the mail and nothing happened for six months. The goal is, we want quicker engagement, and usually is much quicker than that. Uh, and so that's how we know, is from our pattern of working with them before we even send out a citation. We'll know where to send it, who to communicate with, and if we don't have someone, that's part of the work we're doing in the beginning, is how do we get ahold of responsible party for this problem?
Yeah, but if we mail it just via US mail...
Right.
How do we know that it's been received?
Well, it hasn't been returned. And so that's been the, the pattern that we've been working on so, so far, is we send it certified or we send it registered. Certified mail will just verify that it was mailed. Uh, the sort of the return receipt postcard that goes along with that sometimes will show us if they sign it, they did actually get it. But the first-class mail notices or citations that we send almost never come back, and we usually get a response. So we're, we're seeing that through the pattern of the actions, that first-class mail is getting through and is successful. The certified mails and, and registered mail items are often ignored and not picked up. Maybe they just figure that's bad news. I'm not sure why, but they also are getting the first-class mail notice and figuring it's probably a duplicate, so they're not picking it up. So, we don't have the same positive proof, like a personal service in a lawsuit, where you would have a, a process server file and, or prepare an affidavit or a declaration that they did in fact serve this person. And if we are doing personal service in these cases going forward, we probably will use a process server. So we have that declaration, and isn't that using staff time to go out and serve someone? We're using someone at a lower cost that is, you know, professional essentially in that area to get that taken care of for us. But, you know, the, in our county code, what we have to prove at a hearing before a compliance hearings officer isn't that sort of positive proof that we served them, but that we mailed it to them. And at that point, if they, the person wants to come in and offer evidence, you know, "I never got it," that's fine. We can address it at that time, but we'll also have proof that we mailed it, as far as like a photocopy of the envelope when it went. So we'll have that proof internally that it went, and our, and our staff will be able to testify that, yes, in fact, they mailed it to them. And if they want to testify they didn't get their mail for some reason, that's different. Um, we'd be able to say the same thing, that it was not returned.
Yeah, but if somebody doesn't receive it, then they probably wouldn't know about the hearing and be able to assert that. So I guess my concern, if there's, if something is important and it's dealing with people's property or people's rights, then making sure that they have received the notice is really important. So I guess I'm just concerned, because my understanding, I might be wrong, but fir- first-class mail is just sending in the mail a letter that...
That's right.
Is in the mailbox. So there could be a lot of reasons why someone may not receive that. They could be ill, they could be not reading their mail, they could not be, they could be out of town for extended periods, somebody else could be getting the mail. I mean, there could be a lot of reasons why people would not get first, first-class mail.
Sure, but the most common reason where we have difficulties in communicating with someone is when they're avoiding us. And, and that's, you know, the vast majority of times, first-class mail is getting through with no problem. There are those circumstances where folks won't communicate with us, and so we need a mechanism in our code where if somebody wants to purely ignore us, that the compliance hearings officer can still move forward with an order so that we can address the complaints of the neighbor, of the community. It's very rare. But in those circumstances, um, even if we personally serve it to them, or give it to somebody else in their household, or post the house, we've had people come in and say, "Hey, look, I didn't, I didn't get it." So it's, it's a hard, it's a hard balance to strike, where we need some efficiencies to keep the process moving, but at the same time, they will have the form of the hearings officer to provide that testimony if there was, in fact, some breakdown in that process. And then we would restart it. And they would, there wouldn't be an order until we can show that we've given them fair notice, and that's why we have the hearing.
This is our second reading, uh, and the last reading of this, and we did have a work session on this too.
Yep.
And, you know, uh, but po- I used to talk about this in Milwaukee when we'd send notice, we'd post it on the door. We would send it in the mail. We'd go visit the people, but they still would not respond to, to it, uh, until it was in front of city council to make a decision on it, then they'd say they never heard anything about it. You know? I, I get certified mail occasionally on some ridiculous thing, and I don't pick it up. But I get it, if it comes in the mail, I get some from the county. Comes in the mail, at least I'm, it's in my hand, I have an opportunity to open it, rather than just avoid picking it up at the post office. Anyway, so with that, any further questions? I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move we read the ordinance by title only.
Second.
We moved in second that we read the ordinance by title only.
Uh, sorry, Mr. Chair, it's a public hearing. You have to open the public hearing first.
Oh, that's true.
Oop, excuse me.
Thank you. Well, with that, I'll open the public hearing and ask if anyone would like to testify on that matter.
And I'll rescind the motion.
Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion. Ken?
Do you have to close the public hearing first?
Uh, I, I said, I did, I did.
I didn't hear you. Mr. Chairman, I move we re- or, I move we read the ordinance by title only.
Second.
We moved in second that we read the ordinance by title only. Thank you, Kevin.
Read the...
You don't have to read the title by title only.
No, you have to vote on the motion first.
Oh, that's true. It's my first time. All those in favor of reading the ordinance by title only, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Hearing none, motion carries.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Today's ordinance is ordinance number zero-dash, zero-one-dash-two-zero-two-zero, and ordinance amending Clackamas County Code, Chapter two-point-zero-seven, compliance hearings officer.
Okay, any further discussion? All those in favor, so we're doing this, right? I'm doing this right?
Ask for motion now.
You have to ask for a motion.
Yeah, and, uh, oh, yeah, entertain a motion to adopt the ordinance.
Mr. Chairman, I move we adopt ordinance number zero-one-two-zero-two-zero, amending county code, Chapter two-point-zero-seven, compliance hearings officer.
Second.
Any further discussion? Uh, all those in favor, you know, the problem is, I didn't turn the page. It's, uh, it's two pages, so, all right. Uh, so, uh, any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Hearing none, motion carries.
Sorry, it's so complicated for you today, Mr. Chairman.
All right, with that, uh, we have some other hearings.
Yes, you have two more public hearings, and both are in regard to boundary changes to Clackamas County Service District Number One. So I'll, I'll announce them both, but you'll do them one at a time, obviously. First is Board Order for Boundary Change Proposal, CL nineteen-dash-zero-zero-six, Annexation to Clackamas County Service District Number One. And the second public hearing will be Board Order for Boundary Change Proposal, CL nineteen-dash-zero-zero-seven, Annexation to Clackamas County Service District Number One. So Ken Martin is our Boundary Change Consultant. He'll do one at a time, starting with zero-zero-six.
This is an annexation to CCSD Number One. It's another property inside the city of Happy Valley, a strip of land that was needed for an adjacent subdivision to get service. We did have a little hiccup on this in the sense that we sent notices as, um, reference to this previous, yeah, issue. We sent notices to all the surrounding property owners, and one of those surrounding property owners did, uh, call me up and say, "Gosh, you included a piece of my property in this proposal that wasn't supposed to be in there." We did go back, uh, to the applicants and to the engineers for them, got new legal description, and that's what you have in front of you, is an amended, um, legal description and map that will properly exclude that gentleman's property.
Okay, that's it?
That's it.
Any, um, uh, questions, clarification from the presenter? Okay, with that, I'll open the public hearing, ask if anyone would like to testify on this matter. Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve the Board Order for Boundary Change Proposal, CL nineteen-dash-zero-zero-six, Annexation to Clackamas County Service District Number One.
Second.
Yes, we moved in second that we approve a Board Order for Boundary Change Proposal, CL nineteen-dash-zero-zero-six, Annexation to Clackamas County Service District Number One. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Next?
Uh, this is another annexation to CCSD Number One, also within the city of Happy Valley, a much bigger property, almost six acres. Uh, the city has already granted land use approval for a multifamily development on this site. Uh, the district can provide the service through its contract, and we recommend approval.
Okay, um, any questions, clarification? That, I'll open a public hearing, ask, ask if anyone would like to testify on this matter. Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve the Board Order for Boundary Change Proposal, CL nineteen-dash-zero-zero-seven, Annexation to Clackamas County Service District Number One.
Second.
It's moved in second that we approve a Board Order for Boundary Change Proposal, CL nineteen-dash-zero-zero-seven, Annexation to Clackamas County Service District Number One. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Thank you. Next item is the Consent Agenda. Ask the clerk to read the Consent Agenda by title.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. On today's Consent Agenda, under Health, Housing and Human Services, we have approval to enter into a grant agreement to coordinate the Youth Homelessness Demonstration Program Housing and Urban Development Grant, approval of a local subrecipient grant agreement with Oregon Child Development Coalition to provide preschool promise program services, approval of an intergovernmental agreement number one-six-zero-four-four-zero, amendment with the State of Oregon Department of Human Services, Aging and People with Disabilities Division, for the provision of services to Clackamas County residents, approval to accept award and sign intergovernmental agreement with the State of Oregon Housing and Community Services Department to administer winter shelter funds for warming season nineteen, nineteen to two thousand twenty, and approval of agreement number eighteen-six-twenty-three with Ride Connection, Inc., to provide funding for rides provided by members of the Clackamas County Transportation Consortium, Social Services, approval of agreement number one-eight-six-two-four with Ride Connection, to provide funding for rides provided by Social Services Division, Transportation Reaching People Unit, approval of amendment number two to the intergovernmental agreement with Clackamas County Fire District Number One, City of Lake Oswego and Twolleton Valley Fire Rescue District for Advanced Life Support Emergency Medical System Integration, approval of amendment number zero-six to the intergovernmental agreement with the State of Oregon Acting by and through its Oregon Health Authority for operation as the local public health authority for Clackamas County. Item nine is being removed for further consideration. Uh, number ten is approval of amendment number seven to agreement number seven-six-four-two to provide our agreement with CARE Oregon for Medicare Quality and Pharmacy Me- Metric Services to members enrolled in the Oregon Health Plan. Under our Department of Transportation Development, approval to sign intergovernmental agreement for Transportation Growth Management, TGM, Grant, Quick Response Program for U.S. Route Twenty-Six Main Street Site Redevelopment Plan. Under Technology Services, amend, uh, amendment number three to a service-level agreement between Clackamas Broadband Exchange and the State of Oregon. Under elected officials' approval of previous business meeting minutes, under disaster management, approval of the subrecipient agreement amendment between the City of Portland and Clackamas County to reduce debris management equipment from the Homeland Security Urban Area Security Initiative. Under County Council, approval of a settlement with OTAC, Inc. And finally, under Water Environment Services, approval of amendment number four to the contract documents with CH Two-M Hill Engineers for Tri-City Water Resource Recovery Facilities, solids handling improvement project for additional integration services. And that concludes your amended consent agenda for today.
Thank you. Do any Commissioners want to remove a poll and I am from the consent agenda? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve the consent agenda as amended.
Second.
It's moved in second that we approve the consent agenda as amended. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Next up, County Administrator Updates.
Yes, Commissioners, during your board recess at the end of twenty-nineteen, I approved three contracts that I want to read to you formally for the record today, and will also add it to the minutes of this business meeting. I did briefly brief you on these this Tuesday at your work sessions, but formally for the record, I will say them again. So, the following three items were approved and signed by myself, Gary Schmidt, County Administrator, in accordance with Clackamas County Code, Appendix C-dash-one-oh-four. This action was necessary due to the Commissioners recess for the weeks of December twentieth through January, December twentieth, December twentieth, twenty nineteen through January fifth, two thousand twenty, and the cancellation of your two regular business meetings during that recess. The three items that I approved are, for the Finance Department, approval of software services agreement with Open Gov, Inc., procurement of software from SHI International Group. This contract was for an amount of one point five million dollars over a seven-year period of time. This is all general fund money. Second was for Health, Housing and Human Services, approval of a county-based services agreement with Health Share of Oregon for public health and behavioral health care and services. This is a three point six million dollar contract over a one-year period, and there is no general fund dollars for that contract. Third was for Technology Services, approval of a contract with Zayo Group LLC for the Clackamas Broadband Exchange Eastern Route Connection. This contract was for three hundred and sixty-four thousand dollars over a three-year period, no general fund, funds. All of this will be entered into the record, but do you have any questions for me of those three contracts that I signed?
Any questions?
No, I would point out one thing on the last item, that is a connection to Denver that will strengthen our Clackamas Broadband Exchange system in the event of an earthquake or other kinds of natural disasters. So congratulations to our Technology Services on that initiative.
Thank you, anything else?
In the interest of time, that will be my report for today. Thank you.
All right, we'll move on to Commissioner Communications. Commissioner Schrader's up first.
Well, let me first start by wishing everybody a happy new year. Mine's been particularly happy because on December eighth, my daughter, Maureen, gave first birth to her first little boy. And his name is Devon Schrader Sullivan, but I call him Sully Bear because it's father's nickname, it's Uncle Bear. So it kind of works with the family, and he's a beautiful little boy, full head of hair. Both mom and baby are doing beautifully, and it's one of the joys of my life to see my own kids up, grow up and be parents. So, happy new year. I want to also mention that there's been a change for me in terms of my policy coordinators. So I want to take this opportunity to thank Emily Klepper, who has helped staff me for all these years. She's a wonderful person. She was absolutely, you know, incredible pulling together the work that needed to be done for the Housing Veterans Village. And it was a project management. She did a fantastic job. And Commissioner Savis, I know you're gonna be, have a great time working with her. She's smart, she's fun. She's just, and she'll always give you good advice. So, you know, one of the things we do in our county, we have policy coordinators, and we work it so any one of them can work with us at any single time. And I'm gonna actually welcome Tracy Morland, who is also a delightful young woman. She's going to continue kind of being my point person now as we move through this. She is quiet, she's intelligent. She is a member of the Grand Ron Tribe, and I'm looking forward, because of her background and her knowledge, potentially working more closely, more closely with the tribes this go-round, because they are a big part of this county. Grand Ron has purchased land here in Oregon City, the Legacy Project, and Warm Springs also owns land in Clackamas County. And often, we work with them on the mountain issues that we're dealing with up there. So I want to say thanks to Emily and welcome to Tracy, and I look forward to working with you. A few other, I would say, updates. We all attended a legislative breakfast yesterday. I think all my Commissioners will welcome, welcome that opportunity to talk to our legislators, all in Clackamas County. My role was to talk about unlocking the Willamette Falls locks. We're coming very close to that. Representative Meek and Representative Pruzak are actually, with a number of bipartisan co-signers from our Clackamas Caucus delegation, are cosponsoring a bill to pull together a public corporation so the Army Corps of Engineers can move forward and transfer the Willamette Falls locks, this wonderful asset we have on the Willamette side of the river, to a public corporation so we can get it repaired and opened for the first time since the late, I believe, the early, early two thousands, actually. I've gotta look up that date. I also gave a pitch for including workforce funding as part of our legislative agenda, and I know that all of our legislators responded to that. Representative Riordan in particularly was a shop teacher, so he understands the need for continued education at the high school level in a lot of those kinds of skills that we really don't want to neglect anymore. So we're hopeful that we can up a little bit of dollars with that, with our workforce board, Clackamas Workforce Partnership. We will be going down to Salem to lobby for those monies. And also, community corrections funding. Both workforce and community corrections funding is something that is supported by all thirty-six counties in the state of Oregon. We are in total alignment. We have been, I think it was Representative Drezen last evening, when she spoke, that they have talked about really taking a look at that and fixing that issue. And that is a very important issue for your county, because that's where we take folks. You know, they may be incarcerated, but then how do we help them, how do we help them not get incarcerated again? And what kind of programs that we have that can help people succeed in life. I also spent time with the Lake Oswego City Council, talking a little bit about the county's housing initiatives, and that was really fantastic, too. And it was great to be in my own hometown and talk to Lake Oswego. And I really sense there's a lot of interest with that particular city, as well as some of our other cities, of working with us to increase our housing capacity across the board in the county. All right, I'm gonna go to the Word of the Week. Resolution. The act or process of resolving. A formal expression of opinion, will, or intent voted by an official body or assembled group. The point in a literary work at which the chief dramatic complication is worked out, kind of like our jobs as Commissioners. We have, we have dramatic complications upon occasion as we do our jobs. Here's a famous quote, "The changes in our life must come from the impossibility to live otherwise and according to the demands of our conscience, not from our mental resolution to try a new form of life," Leo Tolstoy. Okay, real quick, art and culture activities in the county. Sandy Actors Theater presents Making God Laugh, Friday and Saturday, January tenth and eleventh, seven thirty P.M., Sunday at three P.M. The Sandy Actors Theater in Sandy. Making God Laugh follows one typical American family over the course of thirty years' worth of holidays. As time passes, the family discovers that despite what we may have in mind, we often arrive at unexpected destinations. And, oh, one of my favorite poets, William Stafford, Birthday Celebration. Saturday, January eleventh, June the fourth, at St. John the Evangelist Turk in Milwaukee. A celebration honoring the late Oregon poet laureate, William Stafford, presented by the Letting Library and Milwaukee Poetry Society. The featured reader will be Oregon poet laureate Emerita Paul Ann Peterson. So for more information, go to clackamasartsalliance.org. And also, Lakewood is doing Wait Until Dark, a play that's gonna be presented, opening on Friday evening at the Lakewood Theater for the Arts in Lake Oswego. Okay, I'm done.
All right, Commissioner Fisher.
Thank you, Chair Bernard. I want to echo the happy new year. We are back from a two-week recess, which is, for me personally, a good opportunity to take stock of what we've achieved over the last year and where we need to move forward during this next year. I started off my week with a conference call with the Association of Oregon Counties Human Services Committee, of which I serve as vice chair. We collaborated and coordinated on what our priorities are for this legislative short session, which are really picking up things that kind of got left behind in the longer session dealing with our safety net. And as a government, a local government, our community mental health services are so very critical, as is our services and case management for people, serving people with developmental disabilities. Those are two priorities that not only the Association of Oregon Counties is focusing on, but when we met with our legislators yesterday, that was my role in communicating the importance of that part of our safety net during this legislative session. It seems that as we, you know, we start the year, we have a break, and then we start the year, and it's just like, wow, we're just off and running. So it's been, it's been very, very busy. But these continued themes keep reemerging, and it has to do with how do we assure that we are promoting quality of life and health and safety for our residents. Our presentation today on the intersection of public health and housing is ever-present in our minds. Our efforts around addiction is, are really, really important. Oregon is the lowest in the country in substance abuse services, yet addiction costs Oregon five point nine billion a year. And each day, we lose five people due to alcohol abuse and one overdose a day in Oregon. This is an issue along with homelessness and housing and public health that we will be focusing on as a state, not at this short session that I'm aware of, but for the longer session, we're really looking at how to focus, focus efforts there. Last night, I had the privilege of attending the Lake Oswego Sustainability Network, and we heard from two wonderful leaders. Martha Bennett is now the new city administrator for Lake Oswego. And she spoke very inspiring about, and I just have to just share this with everyone, because I thought it was just brilliant. She talked about, she's a bicyclist, and she talked about how, well, she understands that people can get irritated with people on bikes, because every time she rolls through a stop sign, she can just hear the person in the car saying, "Oh, that bicyclist, why are they rolling through that stop sign?" But then she said, "I don't understand how people are not in favor of pedestrians," because everyone's a pedestrian. From the, even if you go from your house to your car, you're a pedestrian. So we need to be thinking about connections in community, about livability, about health, wellness, all the inner relationships, about how we move and how we connect. I thought that was a wonderful way to frame that. Superintendent De La Cruz, the new superintendent for Lake Oswego, also spoke, and she talked about a group in Africa, and I'm not remembering which community it is, but when they greet each other, they say, they don't say, "Hello, how are you, what's going on?" They say, "How are the children?" And if the response is, "The children are well," that means that we're doing well for our community. So, as we proceed in this next year, the focus that I'm gonna bring to the table is looking forward to future generations, looking at what are we doing now to create quality of life, safety, secure communities so that our children, the future of our communities, can grow and thrive into tomorrow.
Thank you. Paul?
Yeah, well, a lot of great discussion here today. I'm gonna just build on where Commissioner Schrader started with, and that is our change of policy advisors. And Tracy has been my policy advisor for a couple, three years, and she's done a great job. She has, she's great with people. She has, I got so many compliments from so many people when they interfaced with Tracy, and very great helping organize a number of events. I think even like this in the last twelve months, I think the town halls and some of the public events that I sought out to do, she was instrumental in doing a great job in delivering that. And so, and I did have a great opportunity to work with Emily on the Veteran Shelter, and she did a magnificent job and was definitely a key component of the success of that, of that project. So, but they're still with us, and we, it's great to see them, so it's not like losing. And I recall my, my experience in being a business owner and nurturing people, my employees, and helping them grow and expand their horizons and finding their place. And so it's a good broad, it's a good, good experience. And it's nice to see the morale with our staff is, appears to be improving, which is great. But, you know, it's all good. What I wanted to talk about as we kind of approached the new year, and it's gonna be a tough year, because it's an election year, and things get highly politically charged. And I met with Commissioner Bernard early Tuesday morning, and I somehow got drawn into some kind of a political partisan kind of a thing, apparently, a communication, which I have more information on. But I, between that and the discussion about the legal fees, I, you know, just wanna, I couldn't help but think about the different standards. And I, it's a strong word to say double standard, but I can't help but think that it was how we handled this and how we handled the previous two Commissioners. And all that combined is to think about the nonpartisan resolution that we passed in two thousand seventeen. And I think I'd really like to revisit that and reaffirm that, and so that's something I do want to talk about. Our problems out there, whether it's the people that are homeless, there's the potholes, it's the traffic ingestion, those are not partisan issues. And, and it just seems that, I'm concerned that with the partisan, things that are happening at the state level or national level, you know, they shouldn't trickle down in our work, but they do, and we should acknowledge that. And I think that as, we should, we're policymakers and we're decision-makers. And I think that when we have policies, and whether it's what we discussed Tuesday morning or not, we should not be breaking policy. So I think we are, you know, I've always been taught and raised by lead by example. And I think it's important that we follow the policies we make, and if we expect our employees, or our children, or other organizations, or leaders, or families, or citizens of our county, that, that, you know, we do as we say. And we, and we show leadership by, again, being the best examples we can be. So again, I do want to bring, I do want to bring that up, and so I want to broach that as we go forward. And a couple of things, you know, loose ends, as we look towards the new year in a positive way, with the difficult challenges we have ahead. I, you know, some things that I've brought up here at the DIA, some things I brought up under issues on Tuesday that we've all touched on, actually, today, actually, just about all of them, and that, and for the most part, with the exception of maybe one or two. I've brought up for the last couple of years sobering centers and the need for drug treatment. Great video, for those who haven't seen it, about Seattle is dying, and some of the problems related around homelessness and substance abuse and so forth. And I, an idea that I picked up at a conference summit that we had here in the Portland area several years ago from California. And so, but we talk a lot, and when we, and with the, with the new, with the new year coming, there's, I think there's new opportunity to do things a little bit different. How do we actually follow through? And we, I always kind of go back and replay, look at some of our work sessions, look at our agendas and what we did, and how many times we revisit the same issue, but we don't seem to make a lot of traction. And I want to commend our new administrator for what he's bringing, and that is more commitment to follow through, making sure that what we do, we do, the policies we make. But we also, you know, I think our administrator needs a lot of guidance from us and a lot of consistency from us. And I think our staff that he, that he works with, that he administers, needs that as well. But we have a lot of loose, I think some loose ends. And I remember one time, back in two thousand thirteen, the incoming leadership asked, "Well, put a list together of all the loose ends." And I did that. And I think it was shortly, it was forgotten, I think, that I provided what they asked for, and I think they forgot that they had asked for it. And that shouldn't create friction, but I'm gonna list some of those, not today, but I'm gonna list some of those, provide a list of what some of those loose ends, I think, and areas maybe where we haven't followed through with. We spend a lot of staff time, which is expense, which is money, which is a number of things, that so they can't do all, the more important, well, it's all important work. But, you know, we only have so many hours in a day, and staff can only do so much. But, you know, it gets back to the, you know, what's contributing to affordability, anti-displacement policies, sobering centers, drug treatment, all the things that are adding to the problem. policies, sobering centers, drug treatment, all the things that are adding to the problem, and how we, how and what we do as it relates to the quality of life and people being able to afford to pay their bills, and some of the fragile communities and the fragile populations out there, and that whether they're fragile from a health standpoint or from a fiscal standpoint, that they're that hundred-dollar expense away from losing their home, or that five-hundred-dollar, whatever it may be. We can help and be a lot more cerebral about how we approach these things or approach these communities. And it's very, the delicate areas in those fragile communities are the ones that are in place today. And when we talk about development, when you develop in newer areas that, that aren't established, it's, you don't have those kind of issues. But when you're talking about communities and some of these issues and measures that I'm kind of concerned about aren't well thought out, it's about getting the money, it's about kind of instructing a certain philosophy at, sometimes at the expense of people being out on the street. We've already saw that in 2015 and, and since then. So, you know, taxes, issues with taxes, which I raised a little bit last week, the issues around budget, we've got a lot of, we, we need to be a little more coordinated and with, you know, maybe some new leadership and a new approach. I've asked for a retreat to talk about the big picture, something, and we did have a retreat, don't want to dismiss that. We did do a lot of great work. But what we missed out of that was some of the big picture items that we need to discuss that are not really part of our strategic plan. It's really, you know, this housing homeless continuum, the intersections that we talked about earlier, all, it's all very relevant. And, and the intersection with that with transportation, the intersection with that with employment and all the other issues, everything, there's, everything's connected. And so I just want to just put that out there, and especially because of the need. The need out there is significant, and the problem is getting worse, and the challenges are getting more difficult. And therefore, I think the time is, the time is now. I look forward to working with my colleagues for the new year, and congratulations to Martha for your new role as vice chair. You'll do a great job like you've had before, I know that.
Well, thank you, Commissioner. I enjoy working with you, too.
Yep, yep.
All my commissions.
So, that's what I have for today.
Okay. Ken?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I echo my colleagues, Happy New Year to people. I hope they had a, a, a good holiday season with their families. I know I did, and it was, but it was good to get back and, and get back into the swing of things. Most of my spot, time over the last week or so has been spent one way or another with different boards and groups and community groups, hearing what people have to say and what concerns them. So I'll just touch on a few of those. I attended the Timber Sale Advisory Committee meeting, and there were a number of people from the community that were concerned about the harvesting methods that will be used on the next harvest that we are doing up above Malala. The committee did an excellent job of making sure that the, the appropriate laws, rules, regulations, and county policies are followed. The community groups that showed up were concerned about harvesting techniques, and it's been suggested to them, and I certainly hope they take us up on it, that they come to the next Forest Advisory Board meeting and sit down with our Forest Advisory Board folks and work with them on how we can improve our, our harvesting techniques. But I think they were pleased with the fact that we, we do, we do things in our harvesting that we do not have to do. And a good example of that is in this particular harvest, there's a, a small creek. That creek has no fish in it. The law would allow us to cut all the way to the creek and not worry about it because there's no fish in it. However, we'll be setting as much as seventy-five-foot setbacks on both sides of that creek to make sure that it doesn't get impacted by the harvest that we're doing. It's not something that we are required to do, but it is the philosophy that our folks have in terms of trying to mitigate damage when they do a harvest. And we did remind folks that the, the purpose of the harvesting that we do on county lands is to support their county parks, and that without that, those funds, we wouldn't have our county parks. So it's critically important to find a balance between the harvesting that we do and the parks that we need to maintain, and I think they were receptive of that part of the message. Commissioner Bernard and I attended the Firwood CPO meeting the other night. About fifty people showed up to the meeting, which was surprising, I thought we'd have four. It was a very active group. They were very engaged. They were also very well-led by their, their chairperson. And their concerns were code enforcement. There's some code enforcement issues out there that are pretty significant, and they've asked us to be as assertive as we can within the rules and regulations that we have to, to help resolve those community issues. They also asked questions about the condition of roads and certain roads that haven't been paved in a long time. Luckily, their, their chairperson is also on the road committee for the VRF, and so I'm sure their voice will be heard on that issue. We did spend some time letting them know some of the things that we have accomplished over the last three years and some of the things that we are working on. And I was able to also spend a little time explaining what I call Budget 101 in terms of how our basic budget system works, and that we are in a belt-tightening phase right now, as we work through our budget coming up next year. I attended the tourism, our tourism councils meeting the other day, and they had several presentations by cities and what cities are doing in the tourism realm and how they coordinate with our tourism board and with the state tourism board. Tonight, I would normally be going to the Fair Board, but staff will be going in my stead because I have another commitment, but I'll get a briefing from staff once, once it's over with. And that's it, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
And thank you. So because the Ethics Commission, yes, oh, dog.
Thank you, Kevin. I will get that done quickly. A wiggly hello from NOLA. Boy, is she happy to see you. She is a lovely, happy young lady who is looking for a forever home to call her very own. At only six months old, she has a lot of learning to do and will need a home who is committed to her training and socialization to make sure she grows into the best girl that she can be. She's an active and smart gal, so she will need daily brain games, training, play, and did she mention training? You'll have to excuse her manners when we meet. She is just so excited to see you that she forgets sometimes that all four of my feet should be on the ground. But she's a super-smart girl, and she learns really fast, so surely you can work through that together. For more information about NOLA or any other adoptable dogs, please contact Dog Services at 503-655-8628, or www.clackamas.us/dogs. Sorry for the interruption, that's a five-dollar fine.
Thanks, Martha.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
I was thinking towards lunch and what, what I could eat that was low-fat, so there, or high-fat, actually, so, so I'll admit it. I was very naughty. I apologize.
A couple of things, since the Ethics Commission complaint was brought up, you know, men, there were many, many complaints that were suggested against me, and it really came down to one email, and that email was the, the basis of the final conclusion, which, by the way, the, to quote, "I entered into a final stipulation, a final order with the commission with a specific, specifically stated that the commission's position is not a final conclusion regarding a violation of Oregon government ethics law by James Bernard." There was no final conclusion that I violated, violated Oregon ethics law. If you read the paperwork, you will find that to be true. I vigorously defended this myself, and it did cost money, and I could have gone further. But at some point, you gotta say, you know, this is as good as I'm going to get, and I don't want to cost anybody anything more. Actually, the regulation for the county, in county code, which was signed by Bill Kenimer, is that legal fees would be paid for by the county. And I just asked, and I offered five thousand dollars. I did not make anybody vote the way they voted. I just asked, and, and I appreciate the support. And, you know, the complaints ranged from things like, in the budget, because my wife worked here, should I be able to vote on a, on the budget? And somebody actually, one of the commissioners at that meeting, which vote, they voted three to four to go deeper into the discussion, only he said he's voting yes because he needed that question answered. And if they had decided that day not to do that, and I, and I could have answered in that question, and I could have, because it's not the first time I've heard it, it would have been done that day. It would have cost nothing to the county. But the final conclusion was that, I'll read it again, "A final conclusion regarding a violation of Oregon ethics law by," wait, I gotta read that. "I entered into a final stipulated final order with the commission, which specifically stated that Commissioner Bernard's, that Commissioner's, the commission's position is not a final conclusion regarding a violation of Oregon ethics law by James Bernard." So there was no final conclusion that I broke an Oregon ethics law. So I did not commit a crime. And, yeah, so as far as that goes, I just wanted to talk about something Paul mentioned. And, you know, I, this has always been a challenge for me. I think that we all have different ways we look at various things, housing or whatever, or the environment. And often because one of us thinks that maybe the environment is really important to protect, and you mentioned the future of our children and stuff like that, maybe Martha did, where, so I decide that I think that the, that there is global warming, there is climate change. Now suddenly, it's a party decision that I'm a Democrat, therefore, I'm going to think that way. It's my personal opinion. I don't, I would say that the one thing about this job that I'm very, very proud of is I don't make decisions because I'm a Democrat or Republican. I'm not down in the legislature saying, with those folks, saying, well, I'm a Democrat, I'm going to vote this way, and if, if you don't, and they're, they're telling me, if you don't vote this way, we're not going to support you in the next campaign. We don't do that here. We all have our own opinions. So just because mine is different than yours doesn't mean I'm making my decision for political reasons or partisan reasons. It's just that I happen to think that way. I believe that way, that there is global warming. Matter of fact, this weekend is this big, huge tide at the Oregon coast, a big plus tide, and they're talking about this could be an example of, of what the future ocean tides will be. And so they're asking people to go down, take photos and all this. I, I do believe there is a, we have a crisis and we need to figure it out. But everyone's so, and I don't know if I should let you talk, Paul. I mean, we all had an opportunity to talk today. I'm giving my final one, why should I let you add what I'm going to say? But I, I will anyway when I'm done. But, anyway, so I don't make a decision here on any, on anything that is, I consider partisan at all. I think what's important is that our job is to do what's best for the county, and we all have reasons why we vote a certain way. But I don't go and open my book up and say, let me see, I'm a Democrat, I should be voting this way. I've never done that. I always vote what I think is the best for the county. And, and that I will continue to do as long as I'm here. Paul?
Just want to, I guess, if I made any reference to the environment or how people voted, that has nothing to do with my raising the partisanship issue or the resolution. So I, I saw, my, my, my turning the light on, Jim, not to challenge you, is only just to say, if I said something, I apologize, that was not my intention.
No, I, I never.
I, I completely respect, and, and I think Martha knows, knows this better because she and I have a lot of conversations after difficult votes. I've never, I do not, I do not criticize anyone for their vote or their opinion.
And, and I don't think I was suggesting that you did. I, I was just saying that because I make a decision one way versus somebody on the other side who might vote one way, doesn't mean I'm doing it because I'm partisan.
Yeah, well, the, the irony is that I've been, you know, environmentally responsible my entire, my entire life, and I don't call myself a environmentalist, and I don't use that as a partisan or a political stage or anything. However, it seems that in this world we live in, you know, you're not allowed to be environmentally responsible if, if you're of a certain party.
That's right, you're labeled.
That's right.
It's just like, you know.
But, but I don't know how the environment got in this because that has nothing to do with anything we've talked about.
It doesn't have anything to do with what the way, I'm just saying, for example, let's take the T-2020, where we're getting a lot of pushback about building more roads. And, you know, I, that's great for Portland, don't build another road, I don't care. But in Clackamas County, it doesn't work. So that's called, that's an environmental stance in theory, which I support. I would love to never build another road, but that does not work in Clackamas County. And so I vote, vote, voted the way we did and worked to get money on a particular project because I happen to think that, and you know this, and I, I challenged the argument that congestion, cars parked on I-205 create more pollution than a car driving through I-205. Because I know as an automotive person that a car at idle is more, creates more pollution than a car moving. And there's an argument against that, and, anyway, sorry. Ken?
I'd like to leave us with a final positive thought, if I may, Mr. Chairman.
Sure.
One of the old hands in Clackamas County that I had the privilege of meeting, and I won't expose his name today, but he gave me a piece of advice that I try to follow. And I thought it was a great piece of advice, especially for governing at the level that we govern. And that was, he'd never seen a pothole with a party. Fix the potholes, get the sheriff on the street, get the crooks off the street, keep your parks open, take care of the people's needs in Clackamas County. They are not ideological, they are pragmatic, they are practical. There's no such thing as a party for a pothole. And I'll leave it at that.
All right, with that valuable information, we are adjourned.